Good morning, and I'd ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. And welcome to the March 22nd, 2022 County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter by Commissioner Kerski. And if you need a listening device, you can talk to Tyler. And if you want to speak at public comment, you would have to sign, or we would appreciate it if you would sign in at the door so we have correct spelling and addresses. With that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is a consent agenda. Your motion?
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. With a roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to opportunity for public comment. This is for anything that is not on today's agenda. Good morning, Teresa.
I'm doing well. How's everybody here?
Morning.
Good morning.
So Teresa Pesch, my public comment for today is about not having ballot boxes. And I'm going to recite some laws that are written, South Dakota laws. So I'm going to start out with no ballot boxes. Ballot boxes are an open invitation to people with their own, can be, an open invitation to people with their own political agenda and/or money-making scheme. I offer this committee and the auditor office written and videotaped information. My co-volunteers for honest elections even contacted legislatures and the Secretary of State, South Dakota Secretary of State and South Dakota Attorney General. And they are still doing that this week regarding ballot boxes and voter data rolls. There are some laws already in place to prevent illegal ballot collecting, otherwise known as ballot harvesting. Apparently officials in office from county to state levels seem to not know or do not want to enforce the South Dakota codified laws. These laws were written perhaps, my Jersey accent's coming out. These laws were written perhaps because the legislatures knew ballot collecting opens the door for bad actors to do bad nefarious actions during an election cycle. So I'm just going to recite, I think it's four different laws. And the first one is South Dakota codified law 12-19-9.1 states nursing facilities assisted living or hospital having multiple absentee ballot requests. If there is any nursing facility assisted living or hospital is defined in chapter 34-12, which lists the different types of regulations for hospitals and related institutions, is within the county from which they might be reasonably expected, which leaves a lot of gray matter, but that's where it's up to people to be responsible in our office. Reasonably be expected that there be five or more absentee applications, the county auditor shall notify the person in charge of that facility and the chair of the county central committee of each party and any other person who has filed a request to be notified of the date and the time which the representative of the auditor's office will be present to assist residents of that facility to vote utilizing the absentee procedure. Law number two that I have listed here is 12-18-25, assistance of disabled or illiterate voter by person of his choice. Any voter who by reason of physical disability or illiteracy is unable to read or mark a ballot may receive assistance of any person of whom such voter may select, which leaves a door wide open to people that are old or sick or just don't know. It leaves a door wide open for them having somebody help them with their ballot who may change the ballot for their own personal reasons. The third law is 12-19-33, failure to deliver or tampering with a ballot is a felony. Tamper with a ballot or an envelope is guilty of a class six felony. And then the fourth one is if a person is an authorized messenger. So the fourth one is actually 12-19-9 and also 12-19-2.2, South Dakota law. If a person is an authorized messenger for more than one voter, they must notify the person in charge of the election of all voters for whom they are a messenger. So I contacted the auditor office and I'm waiting for a reply of how they plan to go about enacting these, have these laws enacted for the 2022 election. And I do realize for the 2020 election, probably the laws were not exactly followed due to how the... I don't blame it on COVID. I blame it on how we all reacted to COVID. So 2020 was probably a lot different than the laws, but my thought is, and the other volunteers I work with, is let's get 2022 legal and honest. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Is there anyone else who wants to speak at public comment today? Is it something not on the agenda today?
Well, it's about Summit Carbon.
That's on the agenda today, so you can speak during, you can speak during that item.
Okay.
Yep. Any other public comment? If that will go on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider the communication of the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission concerning the proposed Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline deferred from March 15th, 2022. Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler, Commission Office. I don't know exactly how we want to proceed with this one. At the previous meeting, the letter that was drafted and any action was deferred to include some of the comments that were received at the meeting in March 15th. There is a draft provided in this packet that includes the comments that were received during that meeting and tried to make it a little, look a little nicer than the first version did as well. Understanding that there is a PUC meeting being held in Sioux Falls this week, there might be some opportunity to receive additional comments from the PUC to understand better some of its proposal. So I'll leave it up to maybe the state's attorney.
I think we're going to have the state's attorney speak a little bit about it. Yep. Thanks, Tyler.
I may have to write that one down. It's actually better to hear from lawyer. So Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office. Tyler's correct. He had been working on the revised draft per our last meeting. It was at that point during those conversations that I realized the proximity of today's meeting and to the PUC hearing in Sioux Falls tomorrow at 5:30 at the Ram Cota gave us an opportunity to maybe delay slightly the letter to better understand all of the opponent testimony that we would be hearing from, not just those that had come to our meetings, as well as hearing from the proponents of the pipeline to better understand their perspective as well. It just, more information, I think, will make the letter better, better reflective of what you folks want to have in that. So I would encourage those of you that have the time and willingness to attend that at 5:30 at Ram Cota to do so. I, it was my suggestion then to both Tyler and to the chair that we might delay action on the letter then today and not finalize as we had talked about last week. We'll still have plenty of time to get that letter into the PUC before the April deadline, even with attendance at the PUC hearing tomorrow. So stand by for any further questions that we might have.
Any questions for Eric right now? Commissioner Kerski?
So my understanding that the letter will still be considered a work in progress and we're not going to take any action on it for right now? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's what we would do. My thought is that when we're done asking Eric questions, that we would take any other public comments or comments that we have, because there's different people here than we had last week. And then we plan on having at least one person at that meeting tomorrow to take notes. And then we can see if there's more things we want to add to our letter. And then we would bring the letter back for approval next week, I think, Eric. So we would defer one more week because it would give us two more opportunities.
No meeting next week.
Okay, two, it would be two weeks, but it still works in the calendar. It would give us more opportunity to listen to more people to add more weight to our letter from the commission.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kerski, if I could, you didn't actually ask this question, but if the concern is, will the PUC still consider that letter? They certainly will. Until that window of public opportunity or comment is closed, everything becomes part of the record at that point if it's submitted timely. So.
Okay.
Any other questions for Eric? Thank you. Then I will open it up. If there's anyone who hasn't spoke on this pipeline, and we'd ask you to not repeat, if you can, all those arguments we had last week, which I understand you probably don't understand, know if you weren't here, but just try to keep succinct or whatever.
Thank you very much. My name is Dan Liederman. I'm here on behalf of Summit Carbon Solutions. I just wanted to give you a little update about the pipeline and some of the work that we're doing. Last week, actually, we had a very good open house, both in Canton and in Hartford. We had about 100 people between the two places. A lot of landowners came to get answers to questions and talk with land agents. So we had a very productive schedule last week with open houses. This week, obviously, we're pretty busy with the PUC hearings. In fact, tonight, we're going to be in Oneida tomorrow in Sioux Falls. And what I would like to say is, please take into account some of the information that's out there with the PUC hearings when reviewing your letter. If you have any questions for me, please let me know. We also have engineers that can answer questions to the board. So if you have questions of the pipeline, we can bring in pipeline engineers, some of the primaries from the project. We have environmental engineers also that can come in and answer questions. So I would also urge, if there's any chance for us to come back before your commission and your board and talk to you more about the project, we'd love to do that as well.
Thanks, Dan.
Madam Chair, question to Mr. Liederman?
Yep. Commissioner Kerski.
My understanding is pipelines pay, I think, property taxes. Is that correct? Will this pipeline pay property taxes?
Yes, sir, Madam Chair. The, the taxes are centrally assessed. So the counties that have essentially more pipeline going through them would receive more of the tax dollars. There also are pump stations that are scattered throughout the pipeline project. Counties that have pump stations would not only receive the central assessment for the pipeline, they would also receive property taxes for above-ground structures. Your county is a little different than some other counties where you have, I think, a smaller footprint. You'd have to talk to Scott Anderson about this, but your footprint is smaller for above-ground structures. I think we would be taxed on some of those valves too, depending on how big our footprint is. But the pump stations really are the big producers because they have electric that go to them. And so counties and schools get property taxes and, or utility taxes from those too. So there's, there's a myriad of taxes that are paid in, depending on the way that the county sets up their structure, payments for property taxes for above-ground structures. But the central assessment would go to every county along the route. And I believe that you already have some pipelines that run through Minnion County. And you could, you know, I can't give you a direct number of what the benefit would be. But if you looked at some of the past pipeline projects, you could, you could, it wouldn't be too hard to figure out what the, what the revenues would be for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Dan, thanks for coming. So is this project dependent on federal funding as it might be considered a green project? And is the product going to be used for fracking in North Dakota, which is the opposite of a green?
Very good questions, Madam Chair. So I'll take the last one first. There's absolutely no way that this product can be used for reclaiming oil. This is going to an area just west of Bismarck. There is no oil in that area. The permits have been granted for that area of ground. We can get you more information about where it's going to be sequestered. But there is no oil in that area. And, and this answer also ties into the first question too. The 45Q tax credit is only for permanent sequestration. So there's, it would make us ineligible for that tax credit if it were to be used for fracking or any type of oil recovery efforts. But it is true that carbon dioxide has been used for that, that type of work, but it has nothing to do with our project. Ours is just for permanent sequestration. As far as the funding mechanism, this is a $4.5 billion project. Currently, the investors have raised $1 billion. What the 45Q does, it doesn't pay for the, the ongoing operation of the pipeline. It's more of a tool for projects like ours to get off the ground. And they use that 45Q tax credit for the, for the lending of the $3.5 billion to finish off the $4.5 billion total needed for the project. So the 45Q is there as a, basically a way for, to get the financing part of it so that the project can go. The, the ongoing operation of the pipeline will be funded by the premiums that the ethanol plants will be able to charge on low-carbon fuel.
There's no questions for Dan? Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Just a comment. I agree. There's nothing west of Bismarck. I grew up out there. But you left.
You're not there. Are there any other comments on this item?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Peggy Holgistrat from Chancellor, who has property in the Hartford area that was one of those proposed to be crossed. I'd like to show you a photo today. I'm going to be very brief.
Tyler.
Tyler.
This picture is from 2020. And a pipeline company will say this picture shows a maintenance dig or a maintenance activity. A landowner will call it a pipeline leak or an oil leak. It doesn't show very well, but the gentlemen that are in the trench, there is saturated soil that is saturated with oil and the pipe is covered with oil. This is before they even began any repairs. So there was oil that had leaked out of the pipe. They were fixing that leak. They were successful and they covered it again. And I was reimbursed for any damages that were done. But to a landowner, that is a leak. To a pipeline company, they will only refer to it as a maintenance activity. I want you to be aware of that as you consider this carbon dioxide pipeline that will be coming through. So please keep in mind what we as landowners, we as citizens, recognize is different. The other thing I wanted to let you know is Commissioner Kristy Fegan is no longer participating in this project as a, as they have hearings and so on. And there is a letter, if you need a copy of it, from Governor Noem showing the appointed replacement for her. And that may need to be changed on your letter. The last thing I just want to share with you is Dan Liederman and I are familiar from working with Dakota Access Pipeline. His view of meetings are different than my view. Yes, there may have been 100 people at those meetings recently at Canton and Hartford. But I do know for a fact at the Hartford meeting, it wasn't necessarily progressive for Summit. There was a lot of opposition. And that's a part of it that he will not mention to you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Peggy. Any questions for Peggy?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burris.
It's not a question, but I, as a former union worker, those guys are working in a trench without shoring, which is in violation of the OSHA regulations. And their lives are in danger, especially with disturbed earth piled high around them.
And they, they allowed me to be right there, taking pictures and talking with them.
Any other comments on the pipeline?
Good morning. Joy Hohn from Hartford. We've all seen the video of the pipeline rupture. And I just want to reiterate, that was an eight-inch pipeline. Summit is proposing a 20-inch pipeline. They've been asked to put their valves closer together in case there is a rupture or a leak. And my understanding so far is that they have not been very willing to do that. And I also want you to, once again, go on the PUC website, read the comments and letters. There's many comments on there about the depth of a four-foot pipeline, especially when we have wet conditions and heavy farm equipment. Four feet is ridiculous. I also want to urge you to apply for party status for the PUC hearings. Doesn't mean you have to go, but you only have until April 8th to get that in. And it would give you the option after hearing from landowners, attending meetings, and whatnot. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Is there any questions for Joy? Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? All right, then we'll go back to the commission. I would look for a motion that would defer. Yes, Commissioner Kerski?
You know, in the letter, I agree with most of it. I'd like to see two changes. One of them is a bullet that says that we support holding the landowner harmless for any leaks that may occur. Some sort of hold harmless to the landowner so that they're not, I know there's concern about their potential liability for a pipeline that may cross their property. And I don't see that addressed in here, so I'd like to see something that says that the landowner is held harmless for the operation of the pipeline or any leaks that may occur. And then I would suggest removing the absence of any clear benefit because obviously there is some benefit to the county for having this pipeline, whether it be tax dollars or jobs or whatever. So I just don't think that's a factually true statement.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Kerski. Are there any other comments? And this letter is a work in progress, so that's why it's important to have the comments.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burris.
I do have another question for Mr. Liederman. And that is basically, how many jobs would be permanent and how many would be temporary?
Mr. Liederman?
I don't mean for lobbyists either.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The proposed pipeline construction jobs would be 14,000 to 17,000. And the projected number of permanent jobs would be between 350 and 500. And those would be mixed between ethanol plants working on the compressors and the linemen.
Thank you.
Is that in, just in the state of South Dakota? Or is that the whole length?
Across the whole route, yes.
The whole route. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I would like to consider, have you consider a motion to defer until our next commission meeting, which is in June?
That's my motion, second.
I have a motion as second to defer this item again until the first week in April. Do we need a roll call vote? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is the 2022 Coroner's Presentation. Good morning, Dr. Snell. We only see you about once a year.
Thankfully.
Maybe that's a good thing.
I don't think you want to see me more often than that, though, in all honesty.
But my eyes are still open, so that's good.
Okay. So last year was an interesting year. We started out the year actually anticipating being above. I think the last time I talked with some of you guys, it was, we were heading to being above. But in reality, we ended up slightly lower than we were in 2020, still above 2019. So if we look at our numbers, the total number of cases that got reported to us, there was about a 9% drop from the previous year. Those cases that we accepted for us to look at, again, about a 9% drop. Those that we actually examined brought in, about a 6% drop. Those that we autopsied, again, 5.5%, the externals was about 6.3. And to make that distinction for you guys, the externals where we simply look at the outside of the body to document stuff, I was doing an exam this morning, suicide case. Based on everything we get from seeing everything, there's not a reason to open the individual. We can get enough from that. There's no concerns from law enforcement, family, or anything like that. And we're gathering a toxicology sample to send per state requirements. Those that we don't look at, these are either those that we get a phone call, they've been in the hospital, there's sufficient medical information. We don't need to look at those. We had a small drop in those, about 10.5%. Our DC kickbacks, this is always a problem. This is where an individual dies, goes to the funeral home, and then we get notified after the fact. And those can either be, we get notified when the funeral home finds out, when the state gets a death certificate and they see an alarm there, we get notified at that point. We actually just had one a couple of weeks ago where we were notified 10, no, excuse me, 14 days after death, two days after burial. And this actually does have criminal charges pending. And so now the whole question is, is should there be an exhumation? And so that is a type case like that where there is that kind of problem. That's the extreme. Most of them are simply somebody died in the hospital. There was a car crash. We should have been notified. Those that we decline, which means they're simply asking for our opinion on this, should this be a coroner's case? Again, we had about a 9% drop. So overall, there was a drop in every aspect for this county in that, in that area. If we take a look at our actual cases that we did look at, so the top five this year, or last year, was drugs, ethanol, heart disease, gunshot wounds, and then traffics. And we combined all three categories of traffics, drivers, passengers, and pedestrians. Tied with the traffic were respiratory deaths. Now, that does not include COVIDs, okay? COVIDs would be under our consults. Most of the COVIDs were a consult to us. If you compare that to the previous year, gunshot wounds was number one. It dropped to four. Drugs went from number two to number one. And then traffics, there was a drop. Ethanol, there was a change. Hangings totally dropped out. Of interest, though, heart disease jumped up. In the previous year, it wasn't there. If we look at our manners of death, back up one slide. For those that we accepted, predominantly natural, as you can see, followed by accidents. If we then go to those that we actually examine, same category, naturals leading with accidents being the second one there. If we then go to our infant deaths, so this is our next slide, we only had six infant deaths last year, next slide after that one, which is a good thing. Three of those, though, were bed sharing. Now, this is always our concern. This means that the infant is sleeping on the same sleep surface as the parent. You'll hear people talk about co-sleeping. That just means you're in the same room, but on different surfaces. That is acceptable, actually encouraged. However, bed sharing is never encouraged because there's such a great risk. As you see, half of ours were that. They were either on a bed or on the couch. We had two infants that we classify as undetermined. The old term would be SIDS. We're using a term nowadays called sudden unexplained infant death or SUD. And both of those, by the way, were bed sharing as well. We did have one infant that was a positional asphyxia. It was bed sharing and it was an overlay. We did have one homicide last year. So that's very good numbers compared to what we've seen in the past. Next slide will be those that we looked at, the natural deaths, what were our causes. If you look out of the four, three of the four are cardiac-related. That means either the coronary disease, hypertension, or some other heart disease was making up our top four. Respiratory was your next one. And that's a mixture of chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, asthma, COVID, things, pulmonary emboli would be another explanation under that. If we go to our next one, looking at our accidental deaths for last year. Number one was, was our drugs, followed by our traffics, then positional asphyxia, and then drownings. Notice there, last year, or I should say 2019, drugs and traffics were essentially the same with traffics edging forward. But you can see there's a dramatic change there between those two this year. If we're talking about drugs, let's go ahead and look at our next slide. And this is actually our drug deaths. We saw a pretty substantial jump in our methamphetamine deaths. Fentanyl dropped a tiny bit. Our opiates actually, and those are prescription opiates, stayed the same. We've not seen heroin, as you can see, since really back in 2018. And then combination, these are those first four you see there, we actually had several of those. And we did have two cases of a combined methamphetamine/fentanyl, which we'd not been seeing that combination. The question comes there, is it truly they did one drug and it contained both? Or are they doing two different ones at separate times and we're just seeing them? We do know at the national level, we are seeing methamphetamine laced with fentanyl. We are seeing some of that. We don't know if that's purposeful or if it's just the same manufacturers making both of them, the surfaces aren't clean and it's contamination. If we then go to our suicides. In our suicides, we had 27, which is a drop from the previous year, which is a good thing. February was our head. February was our heaviest month, followed by March, and then you can see there were several other there that had three. As a routine for us, people say it's at the holidays, and I can't remember the last time a holiday was our number one month. It rarely is. February fits kind of that, March fits with that. Usually, spring is a heavy time for us, so February, March kind of fits with that. If we go look at what the types were, gunshot wounds are still predominant, as they were the previous year. We did see a small drop there, followed by hangings, and then, of course, drugs, slightly increase in that. So finally, what are we looking for for next year? Unfortunately, we are going to see, and we've already had this happen, is drug costs are going up. Part of that is inflation. A good example of that, too, is the ethanol-only panel. Now, the state requires me to do toxicology on all non-natural deaths. They don't tell me what that is. So I usually choose to do an alcohol panel, unless there's some reason for me to do more than that. We saw a pretty big jump in that case. It went from seventy-five to a hundred dollars. The state charges forty. So there's sixty dollars now difference. I would love to change over to the state, but turnaround time from the state is five weeks. Turnaround time for my company's ten days. I can't see the benefit of changing because I don't have it in these numbers, but ninety-four percent of our cases were completed in less than thirty days. If we change there, there were twenty-four cases we sent to our company for alcohol-only. That would drive that percentage potentially to fall below ninety percent. If we're not doing a formal report, we are sending those to the state because we don't have a timeline on those. However, we do have the state and law enforcement that are wanting those reports, and those are a delay there. That's the reason, too, I don't use the state's full toxicology panel. Last time I used it, it was about a five-week turnaround time, and I have not heard that that's gotten any better. So you can see, excuse me, five-month turnaround time for drugs, not five weeks, but five months. Five weeks is at the alcohol panel. So there's a huge discrepancy there that I just can't tolerate. Transportation cost, not hurt anything, but with the rising fuel prices, I just saw the other day, Delta and all the airlines are charging fuel charges now. Would not be surprised if we didn't see this coming year a charge increase for our transports. The portable x-ray unit, fortunately, or unfortunately, last year we did more cases, so that fee will drop a small amount. Now, that fee is spread across all of our cases, not just this county, but everybody that gets an x-ray carries part of that burden. So that's a benefit to this county. We don't have to cover all that. Inflationary rises. We've talked to the hospital on the supply side of the autopsy realm, and we're looking at a two to four potential end percent, two to four percent increase in the budget request, simply because of that. We're being pressured inside internally to raise the cost of autopsies to help offset some of that. So I would not be surprised come budget hearing time that we're going to have to have an inflationary increase. Now, is that two to four percent going to be the whole budget, or just the laboratory cost portion? I don't know yet. We're going to have to sit down and do some more number, looking at that to figure that out. But again, please understand, that's across everything we do, not just this county. So that affects everybody. And then the last thing is, is I know 2021 was nice. We saw, you know, anywhere from a five to ten percent decrease in numbers. I don't expect that to hold. 2019 was higher than eighteen. 21 was still higher than eighteen. So I don't expect us to drop. We're still bringing in jobs, we're still bringing in people. I really don't expect us to see this go down. You've all seen it on the news, how there's gunshot wounds where they're shooting at houses and stuff like that. It's a matter of time before somebody gets killed in one of those. So I do expect if we continue to see violence like that, that we will see more of our cases, unfortunately, going up. So. And then overall, I mean, it was a good year. We saw less of stuff, some changes in what we were seeing. But in the end, I just expect next year, or this year, current year, 22, to be a little bit higher. Maybe I'll be pleasantly surprised and it won't happen. So. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Snell. Questions for Dr. Snell? We're glad we only see you once a year, I guess, but we're very happy for the work you do and that you are a part of our team. So thanks for coming by.
Y'all have a good one. Thank you.
Yeah, you too. Move on to item number twelve is the first reading and notice of public hearing for the adoption of the 2021 International Building Code and Amendments and Additions thereto, and the 2021 International Residential Code and Amendments and Additions thereto, and the 2021 International Existing Building Code and Amendments and Additions thereto. Kevin, good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. As you just read off there, we are looking to update the International Building Code family of building codes, the International Building Code, Residential Code, and the Existing Building Code. The International Code Council updates these approximately every three years, and then we will review those, oftentimes take what was reviewed with the city of Sioux Falls and incorporate that into our ordinance. So we have similar, if not identical, changes between the city and the county in order to avoid any confusions of builders from one jurisdiction to the next. If adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, the 2021 additions of the International Building Codes are set to become effective May 31st. That is the day after Memorial Day. The intent is to capture most of the building season for the updates. With the memo and in the packet, I have provided two copies of each ordinance. There's a clean copy, which is, has all the amendments made on it and is ready to adopt, and a markup draft that has comments for the various changes throughout the ordinance. And I just want to just show at least a highlight visualization of, this is just one of the three books that we have for the ordinance, and every year it's this big, and there's changes made on every page. So it is a, a long process to kind of work through the wording and changes and that sort of thing. Staff is requesting that the second hearing or the adoption be posted for April 19th, and this would be for all three of those codes, and I'm here for any questions.
Questions for Kevin? Commissioner Bender.
Kevin, does, do you guys have any estimate about whether these changes are going to result in additional costs of construction?
Sure. I just got the information about that, for at least the home building side of things. That is, being that there's a huge book, changes could affect in either direction, and it depends on what kind of house you build. But for the standard house, according to the Home Innovation Research Labs, which works with the IRC, shows that the building cost increase will be anywhere between eight hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars is an increase in costs. And that's for the building code. This year, they, the building code updates has lots of updates involving home efficiency, such as insulation, more insulation that's required, and that would raise the costs of it considerably. The county actually has not adopted that, along with the city. So that portion of the building code has been removed out of the code.
So do you have any idea what percentage of the cost related to the things that we did not adopt?
Oh, so the, like, the, the energy portion of it, they were, the study shows the energy efficiency portion of the building code will raise the cost between four thousand, four hundred dollars and eleven thousand, nine hundred dollars. So that would be in addition to the other portions, the ordinance that we have adopted.
So what have we adopted that's raising the cost eight hundred to five thousand dollars?
So that would be, I just got this document yesterday, so. The document that goes through this, goes through many of the major changes, including, let's see, looking on here, we have footing sizes, changes of footing sizes for buildings, requiring vapor barriers at a thicker, plastic for vapor barrier on the floor slabs, for example, and that's would increase at anywhere between five hundred and a thousand dollars. So that's sort of an increase in cost because it's a bigger material requirement.
Is it necessary? I mean, obviously, you're looking at it with the city, and we're looking to try to keep affordable housing for our people, and you add another five thousand dollars on an inflated price already with supply, demand, and stuff. It is concerning.
Sure.
Commissioner Kerski, you had a question?
Couple things, and I want to preface my comments, because there are more comments than questions, but son of a building inspector for, worked for thirty-nine years and actually sat on the board, the National Board, that wrote all these things. He's been retired for twenty years. But I heard a lot about it, and if I ever have questions, I can go to my dad and, and ask him because he's still up to date on it. But I look at a lot of these things, and I see changes like, hang on. We're lowering the fence size from seven feet to six feet. We're lowering the detached structures from two hundred to a hundred and twenty square feet. We're changing the, there's another one here I want to, oh, if you have a swimming pool, a prefab swimming pool from twenty-four inches to eighteen inches. I mean, it's just this slow and steady eating away at, you know, a lot of these things. It just bothers me. But, and the question I guess I do have is, when I look at the fees, is the fee structure new on here? My computer is slow to pick these things up. For example, on commercial buildings, we're at, there we go, residential structures, four tenths of a percent of the construction cost. So a three hundred thousand dollar building is going to cost twelve hundred bucks for a permit fee. Is that new?
No, the fees.
It's red on our.
Yeah, but it's just the update. You have to put it in there. It's in our, it's in our, I'll let Kevin speak.
The fee structure is, is not in, in the book, but that has been adopted and has not changed for, since, for a long time. If we, we also have included in there, it's adopted every so often, a schedule for square foot calculation of the cost, the building cost. So when a, an applicant comes in with a two thousand square foot house, we take that times a rate to get the value of the house, and I believe right now it's ninety-one dollars a square foot. So far below the actual building costs of the house for that sort of a project. And that probably will have to be updated here soon, too, with, in order to kind of keep up with what actual building costs are. But that is not per part of this, this current adoption.
Okay, because, yeah, what I'm looking at is redlined under the county markup draft, which is all red with the fees. So that's, they're telling me those aren't new there.
No, those are not new. Those are, have been adopted since at least the 2009 building code cycle that I, I believe when I looked through those.
Okay, so is that the same thing with all the markups on, on this page?
Quite a few of them are continuations. You referenced the hundred and twenty square foot structure. That is, has been there for a long time. That does not require, or that requires a building permit for a hundred and twenty square feet or larger. If you go to the city of Sioux Falls, for example, they do not require a building permit for the two hundred square foot or less, but they do require a zoning permit, which I don't see the difference, and which they do the same thing. They make sure that it's anchored to the ground and that it's placed correctly on the property. So, yeah.
Kevin, some of these changes are just bringing them up to date with what the county ordinances already reflect, and those are things that have come to the county commission and have been voted on, like the fee structure and stuff. And so some of those changes are things that are in our court, county ordinances, making sure that the building code is in sync with what is already written for the county, correct?
Correct, yep.
So do we have something that tells us what the changes are then, that is a markup copy? I mean, is that something that was provided to us on civic clerk, and I'm not understanding?
I can get you the fee schedule and send out a copy of that.
Fee schedule and any changes to, that might have an impact on construction costs and that type of thing?
Yeah, and I can definitely look further into the construction costs. Like I said, I looked online many times trying to find this document, which is published by the National Company that kind of reviews this sort of thing, and it was not published online. And I talked with Todd Anowski from the local Home Builders Association, and he was able to get me a copy just yesterday for that, that cost compliance thing.
Is this given to, if I may, to the home builders for them to look at, and they have input on this and feedback?
Yes, and I, that's part of what I did, is I contacted him, oh, four weeks ago or so, to review it, and he didn't have any additional comments or concerns.
Thank you.
Good questions. Commissioner Bar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when we had a meeting early this year with legislators, one of the Otten's was talking about not putting in more costly regulation on new constructions. And you're exactly right that making houses unaffordable for folks that make less than, you know, a hundred and ten thousand a year is going in the wrong direction. We need inexpensive homes for people to get started in. And at the same time, we, as a commission, are one of the entities that are the interface between the bureaucrats and the citizen. And so it's, I, I'm not ready to adopt this until I've studied it further. And at the same time, I think the, the representative Otten, unless it was the Senator Otten, which one it was, I don't remember, you know, I'd like to hear what his view is on, on these changes. And even since the first time I've been on these hearings, the International Building Code sounded bad. I mean, is this coming for the European Union or maybe from the Soviet Union? I mean, somewhere else? What are we doing in New York, and why are we doing that here? I don't know.
Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, we need a motion to set the date of April 19th to, for a public hearing on these codes.
So moved?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kevin. Item number thirteen is a non-routine personnel approval of a new position for the Human Resources Office. Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. Last week, I presented my annual report, and I foreshadowed what's coming this morning. I think I mentioned last time, too, that our long-range plans for the last several years have indicated a need or projected need in our office for a new position in 2023. Our office, like many areas, have been challenged by COVID and by growth, but also very significantly by our recent changes in recruitment and retention. During peak periods of COVID, we're spending about a full-time FTE on that alone. Given the growth in the numbers of turnover, we're spending the majority of our time really on recruitment, retention, and then exit turnover processing. So today, I'm requesting your approval to hire that position that was anticipated for 2023 this year. If it's approved, the cost is about fifty thousand dollars, and it would qualify for American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Questions for Carrie?
Have a comment, not a question. I just, I, I'm fully supportive of this. I'm the liaison to Human Resources. They have carried a really heavy burden the last few years, and while we would all like to hope, and I'm the chairman of the committee that wants to hope that COVID has completely gone away, the recruitment burden right now is, is high. And I just really think that adding another position, not just, doesn't just relieve workload concerns in their department, it aids every department in the, across the county as we try to keep up with the great resign that everybody's dealing with right now. So I, adding, we don't ever take adding a new position lightly because it's a permanent cost that is ongoing, but I'm very supportive of this position.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kerski?
If I may, kind of the same line of thought. I'm, I'm supportive of this also, but I'm always concerned about whenever we go out of the routine of hiring or adding full-time staff to our county payroll. But it, we have to be reflective of the times that we're in and the conditions that we face. So, you know, more of a word of caution to other departments or that may, you know, think that this is a way to get around things. We, you know, we, we look at each one of these individually, or at least I do. I'm supportive of this one, and we do have to respond to the conditions that we're in. So I make a motion. So I make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next one, item number 14 is a non-routine personnel approving a new position for the auditor's office. Carrie?
I'm going to ask Ben Kite to come up here shortly to explain the reasons for the request. But our office, as you know, reviews new positions and looks at pay grade classifications. Our recommendation for this position, if you were to approve it, would be a pay grade 19. And Ben can further explain the reasons for his request.
Morning Commissioners, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Piling on here a little bit with requests for positions. But just over the last two years, you know, not, not only COVID, but just the general growth of the county has impacted the auditor's office in several ways. You know, we've just seen some increases in responsibilities that I kind of see just won't be abating for some period of time. You know, for example, you know, our grants position is probably the, the number one responsibility. We've seen ARPA grant requires a lot of oversight. And, you know, it's, it's a federal grant which has a higher standard that we have to meet versus our other grants. We have, of course, we have lots of other grants that the county is, benefits from, you know, MacArthur Grant, Cosop Grant, just about every other department in the county benefits from some sort of grant process. And, and one of the things that, you know, in our financial control position as the auditor's office, we, we see that, you know, we kind of have a decentralized management of individual grants. And I think that is, leaves a major control concern that we should address. We should have some position that oversees the compliance of these grants to make sure that, you know, we, we won't be held accountable for doing things incorrectly. You know, other things that we've, we've noticed that the county needs to address is our, our financial control processes. You know, we've grown significantly over the past several years, but the financial control, controls in place really haven't kept up with that growth. I think we need, we need to be able to look at those financial controls and possibly re-engineer those. Elections, that's another place that, you know, we're getting a lot, it's attracted much more public visibility than in prior years. We've seen registered voters increase 15% from 2012 and 30% from 2004. You know, that's outpaced the growth in just in our, the population over those years. But we haven't, during that period of time, we still haven't increased any resources towards election. We have one election coordinator and that, and it's becoming a hard time, thing to manage with that position. I've really had to try to spread out the task of performing the elections through the whole, my whole department. And those people still have other jobs to do, so it's becoming difficult to manage that process. So, you know, I guess just generally speaking, you know, like, I think the financial operations in the election process are probably understaffed in, in the auditor's office. And either due to the effects of COVID or just maybe the growing county. But to address this, I would ask for one additional staff position that would be allocated to the, to a grant administrator. This position would not be somebody that would write grants or apply for grants, but really just be responsible for the compliance of those grants that we receive, making sure that we're spending the money appropriately and we're spending, you know, whatever funds we've been giving. So that's, that's what I'm asking for your approval today.
Questions for Ben? Commissioner Kerski?
Talking way too much and I apologize for that, but visited with you about this, Ben, and I totally see the need. But my concern or question is, I mean, the sheriff's office rights grants, the treasurer's office, I mean, it could be any one of other elected, the state's attorney's office. How do you see this individual interfacing with those offices to make sure that compliance is done? I mean, do they have, what can we do as a commission to give that individual maybe more authority to make sure that things are done properly, et cetera?
Yeah, so I, I would envision this position working with those departments when they're applying for grants so that they would understand the requirements in advance. If we could get the infrastructure set up so that we would comply with them. And then they, they should have the authority as, as, once the grants are, you know, granted to us, to go to those department heads and make sure they're, they're not in compliance. And if they aren't in compliance, that, you know, they would have to bring those forward either to, to me as the auditor and, and financial control. But, yeah, they should have the authority to work with those department heads directly and, and correct any deficiencies they see in compliance.
Additional questions?
Make a motion to approve this hire. I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Item number 15 is consider a bid results and award recommendation for annual materials letting unauthorized the chair to sign three of the five vendor agreements. The bids were opened on March 9th. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. I'm looking for your approval for three of the five material contracts that we opened. The first one is for MC 70, that's the liquid Batuma, more commonly known as TAC oil, our hot mix asphalt, and our rock salt.
Do we want separate bids on each, or separate motions on each one of these? Or can we do them in a combination?
I was told we could do the three and one motion for the approvals and then the two denials later.
Okay, I would look for a motion for items number one, number two, and number five.
Would make a motion to approve.
Second. Am I allowed a roll call vote on that?
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. And we need a motion to deny the other two? Is that correct? Okay, and I would take a motion to deny number three and number four.
That's my motion. Second.
A motion and a second, roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next one is number 16, consider bid results and award recommendations for annual. Oh, that's the one I just did, I think. Okay. Item number 17 is consider the bid results and the award recommendations for MC 19-06, culvert, culvert replacement and authorize the chair to sign an agreement between 605 Company Incorp business, or bids, excuse me, open March 9th.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. We did have seven bidders. These are two large culverts that were designed in-house by our engineering staff. One is west of the landfill and the other one is northeast of Rowena. They were identified during our, our interns' culvert inspections last year and are in dire need of replacement. And I would ask your approval to award a contract to 605 Companies. Their bid did come under our engineering estimate by about $65,000.
Nice surprise.
Question, if I may.
Commissioner Kerski?
Haven't heard of 605 Companies. Is somebody new, some?
I've seen them around. I'm fairly new to the area too, but we've heard good things about them.
Okay.
Motion? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, vote.
Bender? Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve. Item number 18 is the State's Attorney's Office briefing.
Good morning. Appreciate an opportunity to come and talk with you, talk about what we saw last year, kind of what our plans are going forward. The Minnehaw County State's Attorney's Office remains committed to public safety, community service equal justice under the law. We had, if we were fully staffed, 35 lawyers last year, 29 support staff. We weren't always fully staffed. It was kind of a struggle, not a unique one to our office. But I was continually impressed, you know, every morning as I came in just to see the legal office assistants, the victim witness assistants, the civil team. Everyone would come in, they'd roll their sleeves up and they'd just get to work. And so that was really encouraging. It, it was really a good year for me just to acclimate to that position and realize that this county is in good shape with the team that we have. So I'm excited by that. I, I think it's a, a really encouraging thing going forward to have that many people devoted to justice in Minnehaw County. Some of the, the teams that we have in our office, the abuse and neglect team, that team that comes in and really works to keep kids safe from situations where, whether through absent parenting or bad parenting or lack of it, really need a safe environment. They, they had a year where there were less cases that came in. That's a good thing. They ended up filing 107 of those. Those are severe cases where we're really stepping in saying, okay, parents, here's your chance to reunite with your children and be a good parent, really what Minnehaw County needs. They had over 60 days last year of trial. That's a tremendous burden on that team. We have two lawyers, some support staff on there, but they did that work well. The juvenile team had over 1,600 cases that came in. One of the really exciting things about the juvenile team is our juvenile diversion program. We had 344 successful juvenile diversions last year. That was up from 189 the prior year. So they are really making progress. One of the grants that helps fund that position, they have a reporting period. They look back six, 12 months and say, okay, people who have, or children who have successfully completed the diversion program, where are they at now? We had a 91% success rate. So those children who are going through this program and really taking advantage of the resources that we have to make sure that they're growing up to be productive members of society, they aren't coming back. You know, 9% is a true win for that program. And so I'm really proud of that. I think that this commission should be as well. Our specialty courts, we had 70 new entrants into the specialty courts in the Second Circuit, whether that's through the mental health courts, the DUI courts, drug courts, veterans courts. We had 29 graduates, so people who successfully made it through those programs. That's also a win. Our adult diversion program continues to grow. I'm excited about that. We've had some individuals who've completed their obligations under that. So they're now in that obey laws phase. Again, I think that's going to be a good thing. We need to find those creative solutions to tackling crime in Minnehaw County. And I think we're set up well to do that and look forward to those programs growing. Our adult prosecution, we have 25 lawyers in the office who solely focus on that adult prosecution. When I looked at our numbers, we actually had a dip in cases that we opened. That's a good thing, right? It's a good win. Overall, crime is going down. That's not really measuring the complexity of some of those cases. If you look at where the increases were, we saw those in DUIs, failure to appear for court, controlled substances. Unfortunately, child abuse continued that upward trend. Those are things that we really want to prosecute well and make sure that those individuals are held accountable and that we're not having that repeat crime in those areas. Good news, decrease. We had less homicide. That really helps my office when we're not spending time on those cases that take multiple lawyers and they take years. So having less homicide, we had five last year compared to 13 the year before. That's a relief. I mean, five is too much. I'm not sitting here and saying I'm happy that we had five, but it would be nice if that continues to decrease. Robbery, aggravated assault, simple assault, those were all down. So it's probably not often that a state's attorney is going to sit here and say, hey, we have some good news. But I certainly view that as good news. Our digital discovery and the digital files, that was an issue that we talked about last year. That continues to grow. We had over 5 million digital media files that we downloaded. That was up from 2.1 million the year before. So we'll continue to work with IT and look for solutions and ways to be efficient and effective with that so that we don't just continue to grow that division. But they're hardworking and they're doing a nice job and they're really giving us the evidence that we need to prosecute our cases. When I look forward this next year, I really see it as an opportunity for this office to just move forward. We're remodeling third floor, this commission knows that. And then this second floor will be taken over by the state's attorney's office. Hopefully that stays on track and comes in under budget. That's a much needed space for my office. Right now, even when we have new people come in, this commission gave me two new lawyers last year. We had one that had to sit in the hallway for a while while we were trying to shift spaces. So it, it's much needed space and so I appreciate the commission letting us expand into here. Obviously, we're getting close to implementing or starting the beginning phases of a new case management software. I'm excited about the data that we can get from that and I think that it'll help with efficiency. Hopefully we can slow the growth so that this space lasts longer than maybe it's projected to. We also had what I think was a win from the civil division. We successfully negotiated a contract for our case research program. You know, we were able to sign a five-year agreement. They capped the increases at 1%. When you're looking at inflation left and right, I think that that's a, a win for us. It's not going to cost us money this year. That was a good thing. Our civil division does wonderful work. This commission sees that from Eric, Amy, Maggie, Drew, Judy. They're all doing a great job. I can't tell you how proud I am of everyone in that office. I think that we are in a better spot than we were last year. I look forward to continuing to be a part of that office and just watching everyone improve our morale and our efficiency and really serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Questions for Daniel? Commissioner Barth?
It's great to see you and you've been doing a fine job.
Thank you.
You know, there was a Senate Bill 198 which would have reversed the trend on juvenile detention and based on anecdotal evidence of the failure of what we're trying to do now. Do you think that that will be coming back? And do you think that the current system, while it could be tweaked, is working?
Well, Commissioner, as far as it coming back, I'm never going to stand here and try and guess what the legislature is going to do in the future. I think that anytime we have changes to the law and sweeping manners, I think that Senate Bill 73 that had kind of changed how we looked at juvenile justice, anytime we have those sweeping changes, it's good to look and say, okay, what are we doing well? What aren't we doing well? What can we improve? I think some of the things that we saw come from that, our juvenile diversion program, that's working. Certainly we have juveniles who are using guns, using drugs and committing crimes that we don't want our kids to be doing. So having those discussions and looking for ways to always be moving forward, I think that's a good thing. I'll leave it up to the legislature as to whether or not they want to do a full repeal, how they want to handle that. But I think that we should certainly be a part of discussions for how to improve what we have. And that's not just sitting back, it's trying to be proactive and say, okay, we can improve this. We're going to do that whether the state legislature says to do it or not.
Commissioner Bennega?
I'll let you answer that question because you have more involvement than I do. And frankly, I know the answers, but I don't think it's fair to Commissioner Heiburger for all the work she's already done on that.
She's done good work.
Did you want me to answer that question?
Well.
I, I would, I actually forgot what the question is, but I'll say a little bit about juvenile diversion. I don't know what the legislators will do next year, but we are in the process of working through getting stakeholders together again and getting our small groups together and figuring out what are the problems? What are the questions? Making sure they're not just anecdotes. Where does those anecdotes end? What has happened in those situations? What data backs up some of that stuff? And then how do we move forward in changing some of the issues that are concerns? And we have a lot of very important stakeholders in our meetings than we have in the past and it's just a matter of reorganizing. We do have a new juvenile judge on the bench recently and so that'll make some changes too. I'm not saying in the way they're prosecuted, but we just need to get up to speed with our new juvenile prosecutor. It's never a dead issue and I think everything we work on, there's always room for improvement and tweaks. And we would, we did support having a summer study, but the legislators decided that we didn't need a summer study, I guess. And so we will do it on our own and continue to push it out. I sit on the local juvenile detention alternative initiative group and also the state one. And I sit on another criminal justice, excuse me, CJS, criminal justice coordinator, I can't remember. Sorry, I just skips my name, skips my mind. But I sit on three different boards and so I think I have a lot of influence in a lot of places that we'll be working through some of the problems, so.
Does that answer your question? Did you have an additional question?
I was just going to thank Dan for his leadership. We've been through some rocky roads in the last few years between personnel issues and- last few years between personnel issues and COVID issues, and your staff has been amazing. And frankly, those cases that we get to know a little bit about are gut-wrenching, and I don't know how some of the people deal with that, especially the child cases, if you will. And your request and only seeing a 1% increase in support in that particular area is amazing. We'd love to have 1% on everything we deal with, but I want to tell you that your position is being well-managed and we appreciate the extra efforts that you have put in to make that all be a great team.
It really is my pleasure. We have 60-plus people that show steadfastness and diligence every day.
If you drive by here at night, you'll see lights on in the legal department almost daily.
And they don't get as.
Just because we left them on.
They don't get as paid as well as they could in other places. Minnehaw County is not your top paid employees.
They're public servants and they take that seriously.
That's right.
I have one other question. You said that there's 5 million reviews versus 2.2?
Sorry, it was, it was 5 million digital files that we downloaded. And, and we're going to see more. Law enforcement continues to add cameras to their cars, to their bodies. I think that's a good thing.
Oh, yeah.
But it certainly presents some unique challenges.
District issues. Commissioner Karski, did you still have a question?
Comments more. Echo the comments on the appreciation to your staff. Thankfully, all my involvement's been on a, a civil level, not a criminal matter, so I appreciate that.
That's good.
Yeah. Two things in your briefing memo that I agree with 100%. And we've been, it's been my position in my business and as an elected official is, I think we're too quick to ask for professional staff and not for support staff. So when you ask for support staff, you get my attention. So thank you for that. And the other one is aligning recruitment with law school graduation. We heard this from Tracy Smith from the Public Defender last week. You know, graduations from law school and, you know, typically they're ready to start working by August because of bar exams, but our cycle is January, which puts us basically eight or nine months behind on what we need to do. So I, I would be in favor of, you know, if you want to call it anticipatory staffing, knowing, you know, what turnover and attrition is, that we start people in August. It takes a while to get people going. So to me, that makes sense. So I, I would agree with that.
We've had some really good candidates who've called and said, hey, I'm finishing up a clerkship, you know, very interested in prosecution. Do you have any openings? And we don't. It's frustrating.
We will in January.
Yeah, in January. And, and they're not going to wait, but quite frankly, there are firms that are recruiting them. And so it would be nice to have some sort of shift. And again, I, I don't have all those answers, but I think it's worth exploring, especially when we have good, quality lawyers who are reaching out and saying, hey, I want to come work there. That saves us recruitment and can be some quality people.
Carrie Deaver had in her memo the cost of a loss of an employee to re-employ and get them up to speed. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was $30,000 an employee. That's a chunk of change.
It is.
And so, should I to figure out how to reuse those and it was over 100 employees? That's really a chunk of change. And so how do we rework those numbers?
I'd love to have it in my budget.
Yeah, exactly. Wouldn't we all? Commissioner Burr.
Thank you. You know, one of the issues is the public probably doesn't understand that not only do you have to contend with our public defenders and public advocates, but you have outside attorneys. Do you have any idea how many outside attorneys are contending with you?
Yeah, I, I don't have that number, Commissioner.
Okay. I do have a, a related issue, which is it seems like the public defender and the public advocate and you count cases differently. And so, you know, is, if, if there's six charges on someone, is that one case or is that six cases, et cetera? And that's a budgetary issue. When we try to figure out what to do, it's apples and oranges sometimes.
Commissioner Bender.
So I'll just say that I have the privilege of being the liaison to the state's attorney's office, and I'm really very appreciative of the amount of communication that Daniel has been willing to provide to the commission. He's an independently elected office officer and doesn't need to necessarily do that, but we really, it's been great to be able to communicate and collaborate with you on challenges that you're facing that the commission might be able to help. And I've, I've appreciated your patience and sometimes the process hasn't always been as quick as you'd like to see it, or that any of us would like to see it. It's just the way things work, but I think we've been able to work together really well and tackle some of the issues that you guys are facing. And so I just want to say how much I appreciate working with you.
Yeah, I've enjoyed working with the commission, other department heads. Certainly look forward to those relationships continuing to grow. Certainly stand here less grouchy than I probably have at certain points in the past year.
That's okay. We all have our days. If there are no more questions, appreciate what you do. Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
And we will continue to see how we can support you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 19 is authorize a chairman to sign the amendment for professional legal services agreements for the drug and alcohol involuntary commitments.
Morning, Tyler Klaat, Commission Office. Please find attached to this, there's an amendment for professional legal services for drug and alcohol involuntary commitments. Jennifer English has held the contract for the last two years with the current contract expiring on March 31st, 2022. The amended fee is $75,600 with an annual 2.5% annual escalator. I could try to answer any questions. Carol worked on this, but I'll ask for your authorization to sign the amendment to that contract.
And this is a two-year contract?
Correct.
Make a motion to approve with a second.
Motion, a second. Commissioner Karski.
Just to thank you to Ms. English for her involvement with this. You know, my time with the Link and the Community Triage Center, Jennifer gets involved a lot with those clients and it's a, it's a very difficult job, but I know from, I have not talked to Jennifer directly, but you know, Carol Mueller has been her liaison, so to speak, and Carol speaks very highly of her, which is enough for me.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 20 is consider authorization to adjust the employee compensation and update the employee handbook.
All right, I'll provide the, kind of the memo briefing here and then I'll turn it over to our human resources director to give some more of the details. Providing quality service to the community is dependent upon our ability as an employer to attract and retain experienced staff. In order to attract and retain experienced staff, the county strives to offer a competitive compensation package while working within the limitations of funding sources and being careful stewards of taxpayer dollars. The county has often struggled with recruiting candidates for key positions, and unfortunately during the past year, this challenge has become more prevalent as we've experienced higher rates of employee turnover, increased difficulty in recruiting candidates for many positions, and wage growth, which is lagged behind the cost of living. Specifically, the number of employees who left county employment in 2021 increased by 39%. The tenure of our employees has decreased significantly in the past five years with 27% of our current employees within their first two years of service, 36% within their first three years of service, and 50% within their first five years of service. Related to turnover, 107 employees left employment in 2021, which is an increase of 39%. The cost of hiring and training a new employee is estimated at $30,000 each. The number of applications for the most commonly recruited positions has a 28% to 70% decrease in the application, in the applicants. These trends are troubling and over the past few months, Carrie Deaver, Ben Kite, Susan Beeman, and Carol Mueller have been meeting to review compensation, benefits, and the cost of living. The following actions are proposed for non-union employees only. Employees covered by the deputies' union and the AFSCME Highway Union will be addressed under separate contracts. The following actions prioritize raising base wages and reducing turnover. Number one would be to implement the attached new pay matrix, which has two main changes, increase base wages by 7%, and number two, to eliminate steps two and four in order to provide an accelerated increase for employees hired at range minimums. If approved, employees would transition into the new pay matrix based on the attached chart. In order to avoid equity issues, anyone receiving more than a 7% increase to move to the new matrix would have their pay step date reset to April 2nd, 2023, and this would only impact employees near the salary minimum. Number two would be to increase the night shift differential from 50 cents an hour to a dollar an hour. Number three would be an increase in on-call pay from $15 an hour to $20 a day, or $15 a day to $20 a day. Four would reclassify the following JDC positions. Employees in these positions would be placed in the new pay grade at a salary equivalent or closer to their current pay grade, pay rate. In order to prevent employees moving to the next step before others with more seniority, their step dates would be reset to April 2nd, 2023. For anyone at step 16 prior to reclassification, as well as for anyone receiving an increase, to be placed in the new pay grade. The positions to be reclassified are juvenile correction officer one from grade 12 to grade 13, juvenile officer two and juvenile correctional training and compliance officer from pay grade 14 to 16, and juvenile correctional officer three from pay grade 16 to pay grade 18. Attached is a red line document which will make correlating changes to the employee handbook, and attached is also a document descriptive of how staff will transition with the matrix changes. Staff from the commission office, human resources, auditors office are here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for indulging me as I did not write this. Let me know if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Tyler right now, the way I think Carrie was going to come forward to, so?
Good morning again. I realize we're bringing forward to somewhat of an unusual request. I think the statistics speak for themselves. What's not highlighted in that memo is as we went into January and February and even March of this year, our numbers continue to increase in the wrong direction, unfortunately. We're on target for 25% turnover this year. One out of four employees are leaving. That's the pace where we're at. So I know we're not alone in facing these challenges. I know we're asking a lot and all these different areas have been strategically designed to impact areas where we think we're having the biggest concerns. The elimination of that step two and four will do a lot for retaining our staff and hopefully reduce that turnover particularly in the first few years. Shift differential hasn't been changed for many, many years. In fact, I think that was 50 cents when I started. The on-call pay is a good way to recognize our staff who are carrying phones over the weekend. So we really appreciate your looking at this. I want to thank everybody who is involved in bringing this proposal to you. At heart, it's our, it's our employees who are serving our community, and it's critical that we retain the good staff that we have and continue to attract well-qualified individuals.
Questions or comments for Carrie? Commissioner Bender.
Well, I just would have a comment that, I mean, Carol Mueller unfortunately is ill today. She's spent tremendous amount of time working on this for weeks and weeks. Carrie and the auditor staff have also been in those meetings. None of these decisions are easy. I mean, they're all very difficult. They were developed through lots and lots of brainstorming and looking at numbers and forecasting. And, you know, the county does not have the luxury that some of the retail establishments in town and other businesses have had to do, where they've closed down for days when they didn't have staff, or they've, you know, cut shifts or limited availability of services. We don't have that ability, you know. Our citizens expect us to have the jail open 24 hours a day, and we want to do that. And all of these items, through careful consideration, are designed to make sure that we can do that. And I mean, this, like Commissioner Karski said earlier, we have to respond to the circumstances that we are in. We have historically and notoriously been kind of given very low increases because we've had limited resources, but we are in a situation we just don't really have those options, I don't think. And so I, I'm fully supportive of this, not that I, I do it lightly. I would really thank the auditor's office because their financial forecasting has really helped us to see how these increases will play out over time. And, you know, fortunately, we're in a situation where we have opportunity to use ARPA money and things to kind of moderate the effect that this will have on our budget for at least a few years. But, you know, just like adding new positions, these are permanent increases that will affect our budget long-term. I just think that this is what we have to do right now.
Additional comments? I'm also going to thank the auditor's office. We are so blessed to have someone with 30-plus years of experience in financial, whatever you want to call it. I don't know what I'd describe it as, but if we didn't have him, we would be in a huge world of hurt as far as understanding where our money is and where it's going. And I think Commissioner Bender explained it very well, that very, very thankful for Auditor Kite and his staff. They've got a great team down there that have worked really hard, and that's not to say anything less about everyone else that worked on this project because it was a big deal. So.
It was.
And it was easy for us, well, not easy, but we just had to make the decision. So final decision. You guys did the work, so.
Those calculations were not easy. There's no software setup to do it. So Ben and Susan Beeman, who was also involved, spent hours putting it together and it was incredibly valuable to us.
Yep. So any other comments or questions before we vote on it? Okay, I'd look for a motion.
I would move for approval. Benega.
Second, Bender.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the employee compensation and update the handbook. Roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Hybrer.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And the next one is, thanks Carrie, I don't know if you're up on this. Oh, yep, you are. Approve the Minnehaw County Deputies' Association contract.
Carrie Deaver standing in for Carol Mueller. As you all know, the deputies' association contract expires at the end of the year. Because of all the issues that we've been talking about through the last agenda item, through two or three of your previous agenda items, we felt it was necessary to start those negotiations early this year and are actually bringing a proposal before you to implement a new contract on April 2nd of 2022 that would replace the existing contract and run through 2025. The main points from those changes are a pay matrix increase effective April 2nd of this year, 5% for 2023 and for 2024, and 3% for 2025. And if we were in a position that we needed to do more countywide, that would also apply to these staff. Also, again, the eliminations of step two and four in the pay matrix. Many of you know that our correctional officers are key to the operation of the jail. We're asking for reclassification of both correctional officers and court records officers from a pay grade 13 to 14. There's a change in the sergeant promotional pay increase, moving it from 12% to 5%. The shift premium increase to a dollar, adding Juneteenth to the contract, addition of annual mental health sessions for our jail division, and then also effective for the 2023 plan year recommendation or proposed change to move to county paying 75% of both health and dental premiums. I think you're prepared for most of those. I want to extend my thanks to Sergeant Craig Butler, Ryan Qualsath, and Brent Elbers, who have participated in negotiations with us. I think it went really well, and we're really pleased to be able to bring this contract to you so early in the year.
I may have misheard this, but it was, and maybe I misheard you, Carrie, but employee promotions of sergeants will be guaranteed, a 15% salary increase instead of the current 12. I think we said five.
Yes, I say it backwards.
I think you said five percent increase.
Oh, okay. No, definitely 15%. Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, 15% increase instead of a 12, and I may have misheard too. So, any questions for Carrie?
Yeah, I think it's an understatement to say we appreciate those that have chosen law enforcement as their career. Totally an understatement, but I don't know how you can say it anymore. I mean, I'd make a motion to approve this contract. Second.
Motion, a second. Do we, does the deputies' association want to have any comment? I'll just give you the opportunity if you want to. You sure don't have to. You're here, so.
And they sat through the whole meeting.
Yeah. Sergeant Craig Butler, president of the Minnehaw County Deputies' Association. I didn't have anything prepared, so this will be quick, but I, I do want to thank Commissioner Bender for accepting my invitation, the DA's invitation to sit in on our proposal. We appreciate you taking the time to do that. I also want to thank Carrie, Carol, and Chief Gruber for all their work and working with us to do that through the negotiations as well as working on the implementation of that and how that would work. So we appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
You know, I, I would echo Commissioner Karski's comments, but I would also like to say I think I really appreciate the good faith negotiations with the sheriff's deputies because they could have been jerks about things and they were not. So thank you, guys.
We don't have any jerks over there. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Roll call vote.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hyberger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have commission liaison reports.
I can just make a short comment about the JDC process that we spent numerous hours in this week, not only with Senate Bill 198 conversations, but more about the future of how we handle juvenile detention-related issues. And we have a big process to work with and we're thrilled to get it started.
And this last week, Thursday, was that community engagement conference, which is paid for by the Safety and Justice Challenge grant that we received a few years. We had a good turnout to that. I'm hoping that we have a better turnout this fall. I would encourage all of you to attend. We had good speakers, even all the way from Rapid City coming, and it was an excellent conference. And I guess that's all I'll say about that. It was a whole day, maybe it won't be a whole day next time. Commissioner Karski.
Last Wednesday, I had the meeting, Wednesday, Thursday. Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, formerly the Minnehaw County and Lincoln County Economic Development, great meeting, a very full house. We met down at the depot in Canton. The, I'd say the attendance at the meeting in the last 18 months has probably doubled over what I've seen over the previous. The communities are involved and committed to it and it's just, I see the organization flourishing and our membership in it is appropriate and just to report on what's going on, I guess. Nothing specific, but I see good things coming.
I think they have a conference coming up sometime in April.
Yes.
Which looked very interesting. It doesn't fit in my calendar, but it looked very interesting, so. Any other liaison reports? I would look for a non-action commission discussion.
Every once in a while, we have the ability to embarrass someone, so I'm going to do it, not for Jeff this time, but for Commissioner Bender. Between her legal career and her commission responsibility, she decided to acquire a son-in-law last weekend, so.
She's very pleased about it.
Yes. Busy life. All right, I would look for a motion to recess until, for probably 10 minutes.
Go to recess. Second.
I have a motion and a second for recess. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming, everyone.